I'd like to call the February meeting of the Bowling Green Town Council to order. The mayor and vice mayor are both absent, and so following the Pledge of Allegiance, council will need to elect someone to chair this meeting. Everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The floor is open.
I would like to nominate Valerie since she has addressed the plan to mission. I think she might be qualified to be seated for tonight.
Is there a second?
I'll start.
Any other nominations?
No. I'll make the debate.
Is there a second? All right. Any other nominations? All those in favor of Valerie Coyle, please raise your right hand. Four in favor, are you upstanding? And all those in favor of Jean Davis. So Ms. Coyle, congratulations. Come on down.
come to our attention that we do have someone now that would like to speak.
Congratulations on your temporary position this evening. I understand. I'd like to just come talk about economic development for a few minutes. For those of you that were around, I guess, a week or so ago, we had a great meeting with the Cardinal Group. They have, it's the application the county submitted to help with economic development for the town. We submitted the application. You all were selected in the initial meeting was last week. I've lost track of time last week sometime. I was able to be on the conference call with the Bowling Green Buildings Group, which was Bill Webb, Mark Bassoon, Mark Gaines, and Mike Mans, and listen to the whole conversation. We didn't say much, but hopefully they're going to send out a list of questions for the organizations, and they called them requirements. I'll call them a list of questions so that we can all look at it and be prepared when they come. They want to interview different organizations and different groups in the town, businesses, business owners. I think all that will be a positive and a great start for looking at a different path for economic development. I hope all of you saw the information that I know was forwarded that our Economic Development Director Gary Wilson put together. There were a number of demographic studies and demographics for around Bowling Green and in Caroline County that I think will be very helpful as we move through this process because it's not additional data to get. It's data we already have and we can work from. So I'd like to say that I think that meeting went very, very well, and thanks to Joelsa for helping setting that up and getting it kicked off. The second thing I'd like to talk about this evening is a letter that I received on the 17th of January. I think you all have it in your packet this evening. Have you all seen it? Looks sort of like this. When I got this, I will tell you that I called Joelsa immediately. She and I had a long detailed discussion about this. It went very, very well. We talked about different aspects of the letter, and I thought it was left that we would move this to the mayor and the town and the county, the two-on-two meetings with the county administrator, the town manager, the mayor, and myself. We're going to get together monthly and talk about different issues. I see that this went further. It's in your packets, and I'd just like to talk a little bit about it this evening. In that I think there are a few.
Excuse me Jeff, I don't believe we have that letter.
It's under my back report.
I don't know what yours is dated. Is it the same letter?
Seventeenth.
Okay.
January seventeenth.
Yes.
Got it.
Everybody sort of got it? I know it's not long, but there's just some points I'd like to actually talk about. The letter is misleading and needs clarification in that it looks like that the county actually, or two counties initiated this letter, and I can tell you that Caroline County has not initiated the letter. We're not willing to do any more or any studies on the 301 corridor. We're not looking at any other economic studies or the probability of those. We've done studies to death. We have a number of studies in the region and in Caroline, and I think from the board's perspective, we've been studied to death. I did call Supervisor Ruby Bravo in King George and talk to them. They are also not interested in doing any studies, and I know that she said their county administrator would call Mr. Peck and talk about other issues in this that they didn't necessarily agree with. There are many studies in the region that have already been done, and we have access to all of them, and I think we can use them in relation to the Cardinal Group and hopefully leverage those instead of trying to recreate something because I don't see that there's an advantage to paying for anything else or having another group do one. GWRC offered to do a study just recently, and that's the regional group for Caroline, King George, Spotsylvania, Stafford, and Fredericksburg for the 301 corridor. And the supervisors there pretty much said that they weren't really interested in doing that. Again, I think the Cardinal Group can help Bowling Green the most in that they are going to come look specifically here at the demographics, the data, the surrounding areas, and look at and giving us ideas of where we can all pursue. Again, they're going to interview businesses and do a number of things that I think will be helpful. Go Virginia, one of the first conversations we had as the Board of Supervisors with Go Virginia was to actually talk about the raise and the speed limit on the 301 corridor, and none of us were interested in that. I think raising the speed limit on the 301 corridor, Joelsa and I talked about it, doesn't help poor Royal or Bowling Green. Speeding people up around us is not what we need. We need people at a reasonable speed limit. When they see something, their time to someplace else may be a longer, and they'll actually stop here. So that was our, sort of our first introduction to Go Virginia. But I will say that Go Virginia has done some interesting things to help. And let me tell you a little bit about Go Virginia. Go Virginia is a regional group put together by the Governor's Office a few years ago. We are actually in the Middle Peninsula Group, which is Gloucester, Middlesex, all the way up to Westmoreland, Caroline, Spotsylvania, Stafford. It's a really big group, and their interests for those kinds of projects don't really mesh with what we need, particularly in Caroline and King George. They have different needs, different requirements. But they have done some very, they have funded some projects. In Westmoreland, for example, they funded a welding school, partially funded it, for the region to actually train welders. And another thing that Caroline's involved in that's part of Go Virginia is the Pamunkie Net. I don't know if any of you have heard of what Pamunkie Net is, but the Indian tribe is actually looking to do wireless internet throughout the state, and we, Caroline is actually a member of that and are participating in that. So there are Go Virginia projects that are worth doing, but funding a study I don't think is going to help any of us in the long run. The other part of the letter is that we talked, that's talked about is actually allowing, are looking for a grant for marketing. Go Virginia doesn't fund marketing grants. Marketing is something that the county has offered to help the town with many times. Gary Wilson, our Economic Development Director, has won an award for a marketing packet. That offer is on the table and stays on the table, and I hope that we could help the town come up with a marketing package that could be used, and we'd like to partner and actually help with that. I do apologize that this letter is confusing in how it came about, but I did talk to the mayor of Fort Royal, Alex Long, and they have one member who has reached out to a number of folks to try to initiate this, and I can tell you that neither Caroline nor King George is interested in doing another study in the corridor. And I don't think it'll be beneficial, but I'll take questions from any town council members if you have them.
This letter just didn't come about, but it came about from a council person down in Fort Royal, correct?
That's my understanding, yes. And Fort Royal Town Council has only peripherally looked at this. They haven't voted on it either. So the opening of the letter was kind of misleading, I believe, in terms of who and everybody was invited. I didn't realize this, and I called Joelsa just to figure out what was going on.
I have a question.
Sure.
I want to know who really wrote this letter because it looks like a joke. Okay. So I mean, I guess I just would like to.
I did interaction every day.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I just want everybody to be on the same page. I think there are things that we can work together on that would be very helpful. You know, the study kind of thing on 301, what we don't want to get caught up in is being caught in a study that requires something that none of us want, but it's part of the study and somebody uses that to leverage. Speed limit, there are a number of things, and I'm just trying to help keep all of us sorted together so we don't get separated in a study.
Anybody else?
I'd like to say thank you for the information and clarifying that because I saw the letter. I was like, you know, why was Joelsa writing this? When I fully understood that this was something that came from a different region, you know, from somebody else. And then as I got to reading, I found it was just more informational, you know, of what was trying to go on, and I appreciate you coming here and setting it straight on it.
Well, Joelsa and I had a great conversation. She's done a great job. I just thought we would move this to the mayor and myself and Mr. Peck and our county administrator to get a little more clarity before it came to the town council. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood because it's in your packet, and just wanted to try to clear some things up. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Jeff for all your assistance and what you do for the county. We appreciate it, and congratulations on your presence at the State of the Union. I'm sure that was quite exciting.
It was very exciting.
Are there any other public comments? No other public comments. That portion of the agenda is closed. We will move on to staff reports and presentations. Chief Police Department.
Good evening everyone. Is there any questions on the Police Department's staff report tonight?
Dean, I have one question. I just want, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Just wanted to follow up with Ms. Elka's request last week on the post office parking in front.
Again, I have factual data that I can supply that I can give you, but as far as making the recommendation and decision, that's going to fall back to council.
Any other questions for Chief Elka? Thank you. Next is Public Works.
Any questions?
I've got, I've got one. Jesus, it's loud. How about that? I noticed when it was warmer and drier the other day, you go down.
Which day was that?
What day was it? Tuesday was it? I think it was Tuesday. It got up in the seventies. Then when you drove down Marty Street, it was like a dust bowl down through there.
Yeah, I talked construction.
Yeah, I talked to Johnny about that. They're supposed to repay starting next Wednesday. Me or you?
Sorry, that's me.
Oh, okay.
And you.
So yeah, he's aware of it. We talked about that, and you know, the weather, I know it was nice, but then it was only for a couple of days, and they were trying to catch up where they lost time.
But I know, I know with all this wet weather we've had, I know we've had a lot of mud spread out through there. Is there, is there any way, does Johnny have a street sweeper? They can come in there and sweep that down, or maybe they have a water truck that can keep, you know, one of these dry days, just keep it dry by road with no water on it. So it's not, I mean, everybody's going to have dust all over their house, and I know that's construction, but you know, it is quite bad.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, just check with me, see if there's anything else you might be able to do. Other than that, okay.
Mr. Davis, I just have a quick question on the water leak in front of 218 Maury. When they put all the stone down, they didn't grade it all, it just sat, and it settled, but it wasn't regraded, so now there's huge sink in front of 218, but now there's also a hole in front of 216 that just fills up with water. If they can regrade it or something?
Yeah, they will. I mean, this, when they're done, it'll look great. They're just, you know.
Doing the.
Yeah, the plum and everything, but it'll definitely be taken care of.
Any other questions?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Events Coordinator, Joelsa.
Councilmember Coyle, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. Are there any questions that I can answer with regard to my report or any attachments in my report?
The packets that go out to the vendors, what's included in that package? Is there anything in there about sales tax, or 6% that goes out to the food vendors? How, how's that done?
There is a section in the application that pertains to food vendors and meals tax. I don't know off of memory exactly what the verbiage is or if there's specifics on percentages and that sort of thing. In fact, I don't believe that there are. Historically, we have not had any issues with food vendors paying their meals tax. I typically send, I send a tax document, a worksheet if you will, to all the food vendors that participate, and it kind of does the math for them. If they plug in the numbers, it has an equation, and in the past, our policy has kind of been if folks don't pay their meals tax after several, you know, if we have to continuously ask for it, then they are just not welcome back to the festival. But in the last several years, we've had no issues with meals tax or delinquency in that regard. If you'd like for us to get specific on that, Councilman Gaines, please let me know, and I can certainly adjust the vendor application to reflect that.
All right, well, I'll just, I'll get with Melissa. I want to talk with her about it and maybe with you and just see, we might try something else, because I've heard, this is just hearsay, that we don't think they were getting the amounts, and I know we'll never get 100%, never will, but once they leave out of here, then they're lucky, they'll send in whatever, you know, so you don't know what you're getting.
That's true. Much of it is on the honor system with festivals of this nature, and that's how most jurisdictions handle it. Again, we've seen a fair amount of revenue from meals tax on Harvest Festival, so it hasn't seemed to be problematic, but if that's something that you'd like for me to kind of phone in on, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure. Are there any other questions about my report? Just for some clarification on the, on the letter, the notorious letter, I was approached by a council member of the town of Fort Royal saying that she would like to explore opportunities for funding for studies along, for a study to be done, a strategic study to be done on the 301 corridor. If you read the letter, that first statement, it may be misleading, and I apologize for that, but it is a statement, and it is a true statement, and that is just that we were presented with an opportunity to partner with two county municipalities, Caroline and King George, and the town of Fort Royal to explore or to produce a business and economic study and strategy, and that is truly how we were, you know, how it came to us, to the mayor, and then to me. In the second paragraph of that letter, I go into explaining a little bit more about our Opportunity Zone designation, which is a very exciting thing for the town of Bowling Green and for the town of Fort Royal. And in the last sentence of that second paragraph, I'm pretty specific about what the town of Bowling Green is interested in, and what we are very interested in, or what I'm very interested in, are any funds that are available to help us market that 301 corridor. The third paragraph kind of alludes to the fact that we're not committing to any monetary donation at this time or anything like that. However, as we explore opportunities and funds that may be available, we just simply ask for the county's support as we move forward in that exploration process. The bottom line is this, whether or not Go Virginia is the correct avenue, or USDA, or DHCD, or whomever, if there are dollars to be spent to help with economic growth in this town or any town around us that can help Bowling Green and benefit Bowling Green, I'm interested in exploring it. I realize that not every grant or every, every state organization is set up to lend itself to marketing materials and things like that, but I'm also not a non-solution type of person. I'm a solution kind of person. So when folks say to me, well, the grants aren't structured that way, my question is, well, how can, what information can we provide to you that is helpful for you to see what our needs are because we need help? And if there's dollars that the General Assembly has allocated to certain groups, in my mind, it is up to me as a servant to this town to explore those opportunities and see what there is available, and if there is no money available, and if marketing is not an option, then it's dead in the water. But I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't, if I weren't exploring those opportunities. So again, my apologies if there were, if there was some confusion with the letter. A bunch of folks were copying on the letter because I deal in transparency, and I'd like for everyone to know what I'm sending out to our leaders in the county and in the town. And I'll just follow up by saying that the Director of DHCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, called me the day after this letter was sent and said, "Your letter is circulating throughout my office, and we want to help you." So I'm actively approaching measures with DHCD, Go Virginia, and other opportunities with the state to see how they can help us in Bowling Green. And that includes a wish list and an ask list that I did give to DHCDs asking for dedicated staff time to help because we don't have a marketing department. We don't have these, you know, a large staff, but I am interested in getting any resources that are available to us to help us grow economically and beneficially in this town. And I appreciate the commitment from Supervisor Sealy on the marketing material from the county or the offer to help us do that. This is a marketing piece that the county developed for Caroline County, and it's a little dated. It's a bit dated, but it's very impressive, and this is something similar that we would love to see the county help us with developing to market the commercial corridor on Route 301. We've also asked the state to provide us with a prospect list of investors and developers that are directly involved and linked to Opportunity Zones and Opportunity Funds that may be interested in some sort of development on greenfield land with water and sewer running to it. Everything that I'm doing is in the interest of this town, and I appreciate your support, and I very much appreciate the county's support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joelsa. Thank you. Next, we have the town clerk, Treasurer's Monthly Report, and Melissa's not here, and Tracy is in her place as treasurer.
Is there any questions? I hopefully can try to answer.
Any questions? Nope. All right. We will move on to the town manager.
I'd like to highlight a few things. Begin with the SMART scale rankings came out recently. There were, there was 32 projects submitted from the Fredericksburg region, and only 10 projects were funded for a total of $38 million, and just three projects got the majority of the money, over $22 million. Basically, they went to the urban areas in the regional studies. Projects, our project, they put in for $9.9 million. The transportation official there going over the rankings with me suggested if we went back in the future instead of doing the whole corridor, we picked one or two intersections that we wanted to concentrate on. But that's where we fell out in that, and so that's, just wanted to give you that feedback at this time. The next cycle, they fund every two years, the application cycle actually will be the next year. In response to our email system, I looked at the state contract to go to, see the Google Business Suites, which is more just email. It's also, it's a place where we can place our server information, our collaboration tools, and also will allow direct administration of email in the servers through a platform that myself or Melissa could operate. In your packet, and it's $99 a month per user, email user for the whole packet, they did have a, I consider a pretty steep charge to move all our systems over to a $3,200, but they do discount the first year for down to $58 a user, so it costs about $2,000 to make the transition. I've used the platform before over in Essex, and other county agencies use it. It's going to be good, and it's going to allow us to not have to support the server here and have all that data backed up automatically through their data farms. And also, more importantly, one of the things is like, when I'm not here and I want to work on things, unless I take on a flash drive and I want to get something from central file, I can't. And I work a lot with Molly and have always my whole life, so that's going to be another advantage that any of us will be able to log in, and we can restrict who can see what files, the more confidential files, like the business files, we can restrict just to Melissa or Tracy, the people who look at that type of information. So I think it's going to be a big step forward. I'm going to be your tech person moving. I'm going to be your tech person moving it over. My former tech person says he trusts me that he will walk me through if I have any difficulty. So that's one of the things. The other is our phone system. It's quite expensive, these old landlines, and the wiring's substandard. So right now, phones are, my speakerphone really doesn't work. Also, I only have one of the two lines, so if somebody calls in, and line one's done, they can't transfer it to me. I don't have a private line in there, I don't have voicemail, I don't have any forwarding to my cell phone, I don't have voicemail transmitted to me by email. There's a whole host of things that you can hit on voice over internet at a remarkably cheaper price. So I've got a, I had them send one phone here today, testing it out. I couldn't believe it. $49 phone. I kept saying, "I'm not sure I want to take that one. I used Cisco ones in the past." But this, it's a nice sturdy phone, and it will, capability will just be amazing as far as music on hold, we can set, sing up 100 incoming lines. So if they're busy, we can just go to voicemail, or if they're busy there, we can have it kick over to Melissa or me. And these phones, Chief Lees, he doesn't have a receptionist up there, so he's not in the office, he's not getting messages. Well, we can set this up so it'll automatically just go over to his cell phone, go seamlessly through. One feature I like with a flip of the button, if I've got to go see a file here, I can just pick up, hit a button on my screen and walk with my cell phone automatically without ringing through to go see the file over here. So we'll probably be doing that over the next month, they'll port all our numbers over for us. And when I see the final bill, I believe it'll be like a quarter of the cost. I know what the monthly fee is, but then there's going to be the federal surcharge and all those other things, so I don't know apples to apple yet, but significantly less. Oh, yeah, everybody will have their own voicemail, everybody will have their own fax line, electronic fax line, and we don't have any of those capabilities now. So that's the other thing I've been working on. The last thing I would like to talk about is Mr. Whitaker. As you're aware, he lives down, he's a tag leader, and he has a septic issue, and he's been asking to tie into the town system, but we don't have the pipeline down there, the county does. So he pursued some conversations with the county. The county said that, you know, if the town were agreeable and certain things were done, that they'd be willing to let him come into their system. He came back to me and said, "We're all set to go, I just need a resolution from the town board." I said, "Well, who told you that? And maybe it'd be more complex." He suggested I call William Stanley. We had talked to, William was going to come here tonight. He couldn't, he sent us a memo to give the background, but basically, he provided us information on what would be needed under our agreement with the county to provide, allow them to provide service to him. So I'm referring that to, I think what he says in this, I didn't read it all the way closely, but what I think he's saying is that we may have to amend the agreement to do it, but in either case, that'll be referred to the Facilities Committee, and we'll ask Mr. Whitaker to come in and hopefully. I know he's got a situation down there where the health department's telling him that we can't use the septic fields because of their family, so we'll try to move quickly on that. That's all. I've got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Our next item up is a consent agenda, and we basically just have a motion to approve that? Do you have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agendas as they are.
And a second?
How second?
Motion approved. All in favor, raise hands. Motion approved. The next consent agenda is the minutes from January 3, 2019.
That was great.
Do you want to introduce this, please?
Do you introduce? Yes, commercial water rates, Tabby. This came up actually last summer, a request by a building owner in the commercial area where they pay several, under our current ordinance, they pay for each business in a commercial building a separate water and sewer charge. So every business, even though the building has one shared bathroom, or told me today two, a men's for a men's and a women's room, for all the businesses, he pays multiple fees for that. He asked if there was a way that we could just waive some of the charge or reduce it down to just the one bathroom. We, the Town Council Director, Andrea, to look at the state code and see what latitude that we had to do that. She drafted a memo telling the Facilities Committee that they had leeway to look at certain factors to differentiate how they set rates, and amongst them was the number and type of fixtures in a facility. So the Facilities Committee wanted to move forward with this and pursue restructuring it to allow that type of exception, and so we're coming to the Town Council to ask the permission. And on the specific opinion, I'll turn it over to Andrea to explain.
What is your?
No, just to summarize your.
Oh, yes, you did.
Okay.
Yeah. At the end of my memo, I kind of gave, I kind of summarized it, didn't you? And so under number four, it talks about that you can base it on the number and kind of water outlets, or plumbing or sewage fixtures for facilities. I think that's where you're.
Yep. So we're just looking for direction. If that's the way the council wants us to go, I'll work with Andrea from the Facilities Committee to wrap up the ordinance and come back, and we'll have to go through the whole process of publishing it, getting a public hearing before adoption.
As we discussed at the committee meeting about it, you know, we're trying to be business-friendly here, and we're trying to make it affordable for small businesses to come in, not try to run them out of it. So like Jean said, you know, when the guy presented the letter, it's just too much of a cause burden on businesses, especially when you're coming in, you have one common set of bathrooms, and you may have three tenants. And I know the town likes to get the revenue, but, you know, we need to worry about the businesses that are trying to come in. So we need to leave it up to the landlord to figure out how he wants to distribute it out. You know, we give him one bill for water and sewer. It's up to him to distribute it out, how he wants to collect money back to pay for it. So, I mean, you know, two businesses, three businesses, I know Mark's got a problem with his down there. And then if we get into the issue of they've got more facilities, then okay, then now we have the right to go in there, look at them, and say, "Okay, we need to charge you more because you do have more facilities than just a common, you know, man's and woman's bathroom to three or four tenants." And I think that's what Andrea has looked at, and I think we ought to look at it and bring it out to the public as well, because I think it would really go over good, and I think it would show the town and the people that we are trying to become really business-friendly. Thank you.
To me, that's going to be difficult in some areas. We have two beauty shops. It's pretty obvious they're going to use a lot more water than this law office over here. So all of that, I guess, will have to be considered.
Yeah, I mean, we would work on those details, and in the end, they still base it on usage. And the issue was in those buildings is they only were hitting the minimum, so they were ended up paying three minimums instead of one.
Was it $24.90?
Like what, like you got, okay, I know what, you got over here, you got the Mexican restaurant, and there you had their water usage, and then you had the hairstylist there. Well, in cases like that, we're allowed to go in there and say, "You got to pay a minimum, and you got to pay a minimum," because they all have facilities, they all have water usage, you know, that's a different setup. And that's what we need to try to get this set up to do, you know, to where we have the right to go in and look at it, and look at it. But if it's an obvious one bathroom to three different units in there, then, you know, why are we gouging the business owners? You know? So that's the way, you know, that's the way I believe of that.
We don't necessarily need a formal vote, we just kind of need a consensus. Is that right, please?
Consensus for us to look at it more.
Well, to go, to move forward.
To move forward. By being on the committee, I think I'd like to see that we move forward, dig into this and see what we can come up with.
So should we put it into formal ordinance format and present it to you in March, and then you would authorize a public hearing?
Thank you.
Okay, that's a good question. All right, good.
The next item is the Police Department Policy and Procedure Manual. Chief Lipskin, did you want to approach and speak on anything?
Sure. I trust each of you have the rather lengthy letter I wrote about the police policy and procedure manual. But basically, in it, at this point, the manual, which is again here before you tonight, is completed, it's rough draft copy, and it needs to be approved by council. The question that was brought up at the last subcommittee meeting was how council wished to proceed with adopting a new police policy manual, and what process you wanted to undertake in which to do so. Several options were discussed, and in those options, one was to forward the police policy and procedure manual in its entirety to the town attorney for review. Town manager brought up an issue of cost of review, which is obviously a concern, and the time allowed, the time it would take to make that review. As it stands right now, the police department has had to cease operations in subtle areas because of the lack of a policy, a written policy as required by law. So the importance of this policy manual going forward can't be overstated. So again, we're here tonight, and again, Councilman Gaines and Councilman Howard were at that subcommittee meeting, and the decision was opposite of you guys, Gaines, how do you want to, how do you want to process this manual going forward?
Well, I spoke with Andrea right before the meeting, and she said she would be willing to go over it. And I told her we need to do it in a timely, I mean, in a speedier fashion, a timely manner, because, you know, the importance of it. She said she would be willing to do it, and I believe she said it would be an additional cost.
Okay.
At that.
Okay.
So, but I mean, we still have the option tonight to where we can even just go ahead and pass it and put it into play if we wanted to. That's on the table as well. We don't have to take it to Andrea. This thing is a, well, why don't you tell us more about it? How it come about?
Mr. Gaines, we do have money in our contingency, so just leave it up.
Right. This policy manual came up in, to give the background, the original, or what I consider to be the original Bowling Green Police Department policy manual was adopted in August of 1996. Since that time, I'm unable to find any amendments whatsoever to, I guess, what you would consider the current policy manual. So with that said, a lot of case law has changed, a lot of laws have changed since 1996, and that policy manual is grossly outdated. As a matter of fact, just to use this example, when it comes to issues of domestic assault, the code now requires the officer, it states that shall make an arrest versus may make an arrest. The old policy basically still says shall, I mean, may, and doesn't give any direction on the proper process of doing so. So with that said, and this is my concern, not just for me, this department, but also as council as a whole, obviously, police work is an area of high liability, and again, hate to beat a dead horse, but we're only using awful lot, and undoubtedly, policy will come into play. And with that said, back when I started in November of 2017, the first thing I set out to do was create a new policy manual. Now, what I did is I collected the policy manuals from the Carolina County Sheriff's Office in its entirety, which obviously, I was an appointee there for 13 years, and that's what I was used to. That policy has, is, in parts, come from the Virginia State Police. I was able to get Virginia State Police policy in its entirety. I was able to get the policy and procedure manual from the Ashland Police Department in its entirety, and bits and pieces from Tappahannock and the town of Louisiana. So with that said, all that information was compiled to kind of put the shoe on our foot. Obviously, policies are different based upon manpower, based upon, you know, how many employees you got, how the rank and file structure would be set up. So it was created to fit the town of Bowling Green, but all the basic requirements are there, such as a policy on sexual assault, a policy on domestic violence, a policy on photo lineups. And then also your more critical policies, like use of force, pursuit driving, operation of police vehicles, handcuffing techniques, all those things are in there. And again, not just to cover me, but to cover the town's assets as a whole. So that's kind of where it was derived from. Nobody, at least on the police side, nobody really formulates new policy anymore. It's kind of a cut and paste, add and subtract to what fits you. It's not really new science anymore. Our policies, and certainly here in Virginia, obviously, DCGS, Department of Justice Services, governs what we can do, what we can't do. They govern our training, and all those training facets are in there. And as far as the employee benefits section, basically, that just mirrors what the town's actual personnel policy is for all employees. So that's kind of where I'm at with that. That's where it came from. And again, this policy, and as I said in my letter to council here, I'm not asking you to take my word as supreme truth. You can make the decision to do whatever you wish, but I am here to tell you that it is of the utmost importance, and we need to, we need to get this thing corrected as soon as possible, because to be well honest, we've taken a huge chance over the last year in operating without this.
Anyone have any questions for Chief?
Thank you, Chief. Back here.
So would, do you want to approve it tonight as the chief has suggested? Would you like for me to review it and give feedback to the chief, and then just work with the town manager? How would you like to go about this?
Maybe tonight?
What kind of timeframe would you, you know, it's, it's something that we feel, me and Doug, that we need to get along the pace with, because we don't want to hold your child up, but we know how your spread is. We talked it over with the chief, and we, in quite depth.
And, you know, the way it comes from other communities, you know, and we're using basically the same one the sheriff is using.
Correct.
So we can get it both for it tonight, which I kind of think we ought to do. So we can get it both forth tonight, which I kind of think we ought to do too. And, you know, get this thing behind us and get the police force on track where they need to be.
I would, you, have you read it?
No, I don't think you will either. But if you do, that's good, that's.
I would not recommend approving something that I haven't read.
Then what, what's your capability of going through it then?
I mean, I certainly.
Okay. And what time of time matter are we looking at?
What is the timeframe that you need?
Next council meeting.
Yeah, I do think, you know, I mean, if we have policies in place now is my understanding, but if they're outdated, it does put a risk to the town and to, you know, the police themselves. I mean, I, so if we can get it done by the next town, by the next, that would give folks a good amount of time to be able to review what they need to do. It is, there's a lot to it. I mean, but I have confidence that you could do that, you know? If you feel that you, then, yeah, that would be fine. Do you have a copy for me tonight?
I don't have, I can give you this copy if you want, but I'll have to, if you would like electronic, I'll have to reach one more. I, I, again, I'm in agreement with the town attorney on this. I believe in checks and balances. I think what most likely will happen is once the town attorney starts reading through this, she'll probably, I'm sure this is not her first time in doing something like this, and I'm sure she'll find a lot of the same beverage that is, that is listed in the police and sheriff's office manuals everywhere. So I don't intend this to be an extra long process, but I think, I think for the town's benefit, that's probably the best decision. But one tidbit I did want to add in there, when it came to, as the current town code is written, and it's, and basically it says that, and it's in the letter I gave to council, basically it says that the town manager, in consultation with, with the police chief, should prepare rules and regulations for the police force. It's kind of a big burden to put on your town manager who doesn't have a police background. I don't know if that is absolutely the way it needs to be. And then furthermore, policies have the, policies have been known to change overnight with Supreme Court rulings, case laws. And again, it's listed in your letter here, it would be, what I'm saying, it's kind of hard to wait month to month if we need to change a policy. It'd be nice to have some leeway in there. And again, this is not to, to keep council out of the loop, but if we need to change a policy, maybe some authority to do so and then advise you on it would certainly, certainly be helpful.
Well, and what happens if, if a ruling comes down, say, from the Supreme Court, that ruling is followed immediately by law enforcement and then the, you know, you don't have to wait to change the policy to follow the law.
Right.
So we can work that out.
I would like to add, if we do have Andrea do this, this year, we've put a lot of additional work on her throughout the year and right now, she's working on the recodification, which is not part of her normal workload. So I just feel that given the amount of work that we put on, that the additional compensation is, and if you do want her to review it, I'd like permission to use some contingency funds to make some adjustment to her compensation issue.
She did say earlier that it would be some compensation to it because of the size of it. So, yeah, that's something that we would have to pay her for.
If it's in the budget, you don't need a vote from them, you just.
No, it's in there. I just want, if everybody understands what I'm doing, no problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark, chairperson of budget and personnel.
We just talked about a bunch of things. One was the police process, which we just went over, the eligibility of water and we went on to some of the payroll budgets for the new, the new raises that we're looking at and the scale, the employee scale. So more to follow on that, but maybe we'll have more next, next month for you or a month after we get close to the budget.
I did put the heads up as the budget presentation is at the March meeting and I sent out the corrected, intransigent budget this afternoon, I found some errors in it. And then we have the scheduled meeting, but we can always schedule additional ones if you want, if you want to. Just look at what I sent you in the letter.
Thank you, Mark. Otis, as chairperson of, okay, as town representative for the planning commission, we voted on a new chairperson for the planning commission. Jeff Voight is the new chairperson. And we just sat in on the call for the EDA to hear with the Cardinal Group. It was extremely limited, but we'll have information as Joel sort of progresses and gives us that. And that was it for the planning commission.
Does anyone else? And we too talked about the Cardinal Group coming and they're going to get back with us.
Anyone else?
I'm making a motion we adjourn it.
Motion to adjourn by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the committee. All in favor?